Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Issaquah Council Meeting this October 7th. Nice to see so many people from so many different groups coming to talk with us tonight or hear a proclamation. Councilmembers Hall and Martz both have an excused absence this evening, and as a reminder, we still continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
It sounds a lot better when we have a lot of people in the room. So our next item of business is special business, and we have several items tonight. It's been a busy week, and September tends to be a month where we do a lot of proclamations. The first item is ID 1766. This is the Sister Cities Cultural Exchange Award Presentation, and I'd like to invite Sister Cities Commission Liaison Tina Eggers, Commission Chair Stephanie Angula, and Artist Mr. Wali Alami to the lectern. Come on up, all. If you want to clap, you can clap. There we go.
Thank you very much. Tina Eggers, Chief of Staff and Staff Liaison to the Sister City Commission. I would like to welcome Mr. Wali Alami and Stephanie, our co-chair. Mohammed is in the back. He will step forward and help with translation when we get to that point. First, I'd like to say thank you to our commissioners, as well as the Arts Commission and our volunteers. If you're in the audience, can you raise your hand if you helped out with the event? Thank you.
Lots of hands in the air.
Yes, lots of gratitude. All the help was essential and with much appreciation. That partnership is invaluable. It's been an incredible week, celebrating and showcasing the work of Mr. Wali Alami. We had events at Providence Points, local schools, Sammon Days. It's been really busy and really, really rewarding. Mr. Wali Alami is a renowned artisan in the craft of leather specializing in Moroccan babush, which means slippers. We thank him, and we thank the Moroccan Ministry of Arts and Crafts for their involvement. And I would like to turn the microphone over to Stephanie Angula to say a few words.
Hello, hello. I just wanted to say, many of us are familiar with the Sister Cities relationship, but that relationship, while we think of it as living between two cities, it actually resides in the minds and the hearts of the residents and the people living in both cities. So this week, we've had the honor of having Mr. Alami here with us, and he has brought so much to our community and been an amazing partner and featured artist that we can give to our community. At the same time, it's also been an honor for us to take this incredible town that so many of us love here in Issaquah and give that to you and ask that you feel happy and open to share Issaquah with other people. So that bond is continuing to grow as it lives in the hearts and minds of the people, on and on and on. We also had many partners. I'd just like to take a moment to thank the Arts Commission, Providence Point Volunteers, Sammon Days, and the local Moroccan community for all that they did to support Mr. Alami. With that, the Commission would like to honor our guest with a gift, a local painting converted to print by our very own Commissioner, Mr. Victor Bello. And you're always welcome here in Issaquah, and may you always view Issaquah as your home.
It has been an incredible week of events and activities. Hosting an artist from another country is a really big lift, and you need a lot of really great volunteers to see this through and make sure that Wali is getting welcomed at all different places in our town and able to see some of the Northwest. So glad for all of you who helped to make this happen. I had the privilege of going to Morocco to see our sister city twice in one year. That was not planned. Our first trip after many, many, many years was to reconnect and find some common ground in arts and culture and other projects that we may want to work on together. But we ended up being there two days after the very, very historically tragic earthquake up in the Atlas Mountains, and it changed the entire tone and tenor of the visit. We had checked in and made sure with our hosts whether or not they wanted us to come when something was going on, and they said it was the time to come, that after a disaster like that, the community is feeling lost, there's a lot of hopelessness. And when someone comes to invest in and find out how you may be able to help back in your own country, it's a pretty emotional moment, to say the least. What we came up with in our very first visit, that we worked on several projects. One was to begin again our cultural exchange in the arts and make sure we had some visiting artisans for Sammon Days. So Wali was here demonstrating his craft in schools and at the fair and at all the different events that he was hosted at, so that was wonderful. We also decided to do a humanitarian project, and the generosity of this community and the American Moroccan community in putting together an event at Pickering Barn was absolutely overwhelming. And Dunia here, and Mohammed, and all of the Sister Cities team and their relatives who they made volunteer, did a huge lift in order to do one event to raise funds and take donations to deliver 16,000 to 17,000 winter clothing items, blankets, hats, coats, all that kind of thing, to an area that has been utterly devastated, as well as working with some nonprofits there and bringing over refurbished computers to allow them to be able to do things and make connections that they didn't have before. So in September, we did a -- no, that's not right. When did we do the return trip? June? June? The return trip was in June, very small contingent, but we got to connect with the Red Cross, Red Crescent Organization, and personally transfer all of those items right in the area just next to the Atlas Mountains, where we know that they will help people get through the next three, four, five winters until their towns are reconstructed. We're also looking at an environmental piece, which we never looked at before, and that is looking into our climate action plans and finding something that an arid mountain community in a very wet Northwest can do together, the same project, and demonstrate the benefits for the community. And I'm missing one, because I know we had four projects, but I can't remember the fourth. All I want to tell you is that these visits and these connections and the hard work of all of these people have really renewed, refreshed, and put a lot of excitement in our Sister City relationship. So I am so grateful to have the opportunity to be the face of the community, but now we also have the face of our sisters and brothers in Morocco with Wali coming to visit us and share his craft. So I'm so grateful to him, and I want to present him a recognition award from the city, because this was just a fabulous adventure due to him and his outstanding -- it was an outstanding cultural exchange with the Issaquah community, and I cannot thank you enough. Proclamation.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to Council President, who would like to provide some recognition from our City Council. Thank you, Council President.
But we don't go small when we recognize people in the way that they have been able to contribute. So the City Council would like to recognize and thank you for your visit, the cultural exchange, the importance of it, and so we have a small token of our appreciation and a box for you to take at home.
Check in, ladies. Here we go. This is a beautiful picture. Thank you, everyone. And now, Wali, this is for you.
He spent a month and a half before coming, learning English and practicing what he wants to say. So bear with him, bear with his accent, but I know he is so passionate. He loves the experience. He loved the hospitality, and he wants to share a few words.
Good evening. Bismillah, rahmanir rahim, wa salaatu wa salaamu ala a'shraf al-mursalim, ladies and gentlemen. I am Wali Alami Mohammed, a craftsman and direct manager of Asal Al Alemi in Faz, Morocco, specialized in Moroccan slippers. First, I'd like to express my happiness in being among you in this beautiful and amazing city. I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to the mayor of Issaquah, the Sister Cities Commission, and all organizers of this Sammon Days festival for inviting and hosting us. I'd also like to thank the Moroccan Ministry of Tourism, Handicrafts, Social Economy, and Solidarity, and its delegates in Faz Mknas area and Maison d'Artisans for choosing me to represent Moroccan craftsmen. The twinning of American city of Issaquah and the Moroccan city of Chouchouan reflects the cultural and historical relationship between the two cities. Issaquah, located in Washington City, is known for its natural beauty and mountainous surroundings, where Chouchouan, located in northern Morocco, is famous for its stunning blue buildings and the surrounding reef mountains. The blue color symbolizes the spirit of tolerance and coexistence between religions in Morocco. This winning aims to enhance cultural understanding and the exchange experiences between the two cities through educational, artistic, and tourism activities. The partnership is part of efforts to promote dialogue and cooperation between peoples at the local and international levels, contributing to fostering friendship and cultural communication between and United States and Morocco. Please allow me to offer you this modest child complacency handment and reflecting a part of Irish handicrafts in Morocco. Long live the Moroccan-American friendship. Thank you.
Take a picture in front of the City Council. That is.
At the end of this lovely week among you, I'd like to express my gratitude to everyone here and to the whole community of Issaquah for your hospitality and generosity. I know that my English is poor, but my feelings are very sincere, and I've tried to forge historical ties through this modest work and know Moroccan crafts. I'll leave you some samples of different slippers and some old and traditional tools, follyful history and memory of my father and my godparents as a sample of our valuable friendship. Let's add a new brick together to our historical friendship. Thank you once again. God bless. God bless you. Thank you.
Basically, he wants to leave the scissors that his father made the slippers with 50 years ago. He wishes to leave them city as slippers.
That's beautiful. I'm going to close this out with one fact. I would be a very bad Sister City representative if I didn't tell you that in every single tour I went, every single tour guide in Morocco told me the very first country in the world to recognize the United States of America when we formed was Morocco. So heard it everywhere, so had to get that in there. Thank you, Wali.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and if at any point in time our meeting is going on too long, everybody is allowed to leave as they want to, but thank you to everyone who came out tonight. You really made this special to have such a big turnout from the community. So we're going to keep going through our special business, and we're going to start off with Council President. Council President is going to be presenting ID 1706. This is Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week proclamation, and I'd like to invite Community Planning and Development Director Minnie Dollywell to the lectern. Welcome, Minnie.
Well, and as she's coming up, just I was hoping that Lori would be here, our code enforcement officer, because I have just heard so very much from other cities, from residents, from other staff members about how much her work matters. And I have a little secret, that I check our See Click Fix app all the time to see what people are talking about that needs to be fixed in the city, and Lori gets on those code enforcement activities so quick and is just such a thorough respondent to the community members to recognize what the need is. So I just, I really want to, I hope you'll pass along the thanks. So we have a proclamation here. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for safety, health, and welfare of the citizens and the communities throughout the state of Washington through the enforcement of local codes or ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas the role of many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years with the increased number of foreclosed and abandoned homes and communities impacted economically. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas the Washington Association of Code Enforcement wants to recognize and honor code enforcement officers and professionals all across the state of Washington and bring awareness to the importance of code enforcement to the communities of the state of Washington. Therefore, I, Lindsay Walsh, on behalf of Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of October 7th to 13th, 2024, to be Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Issaquah, and invite the community to join me in thanking Issaquah's code enforcement officers for their service and outstanding contributions. Would you like to say any words?
Real quickly, thank you. I'm accepting in behalf of Lori Dunning, who couldn't be here tonight, but I couldn't agree with Council President Walsh more. She's very responsive, you know, takes great pride in making Issaquah a better place, whether it's all sorts of complaints from graffiti to trees to garbage to coordinating with public health, so the gamut of issues. So we're fortunate to have.
Thank you. Our next item of business is ID 1707, Arts and Humanities Month proclamation, and Council Member Hunt would like to invite some guests up to the lectern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to invite Arts Program Manager Amy Dukes and any members of the Arts Commission and other guests to receive the proclamation. Thank you so much for being here. Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month for three decades by the National Endowment for the Arts, the White House, Congress, and thousands of arts and cultural organizations and communities across the country. And whereas the arts and humanities enhance every aspect of life, improving our economy, enriching our civic life, driving tourism, and exerting a profound positive influence on education. And whereas the arts and humanities help diverse communities explore their history and culture with the support and partnership of local educational and cultural institutions. And whereas the arts are a proven civic engagement tool and can bring people together across difference in challenging times. And whereas educational research shows that the arts help to foster discipline, creativity, imagination, self-expression, and problem-solving skills while also helping to develop a heightened appreciation of beauty and cross-cultural understanding. And whereas the nation's arts and culture section, nonprofit and commercial, represent an over $1 trillion American industry, 4.4% of our national GDP, and supports 4.85 million American jobs. And whereas Issaquah is home to a vibrant community of arts, culture, and humanities organizations, creative businesses, artists, makers, and creative workers that positively impact our city in immeasurable ways. Now, therefore, I, Councilmember Victoria Hunt, on behalf of Mayor Mary Lou Polly of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of October to be Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Issaquah, and welcome the community to join us in this celebration. And Amy Dukes, would you like to come up and?
Just want to say thank you to everyone who makes our arts and culture community vibrant, and we were so pleased to be able to take part in the artist exchange. I think it's just a great example of the power of arts and culture to connect.
Our next item of special business this evening is ID 1708, Fire Prevention Week proclamation, and Councilmember Ray is going to invite some guests up to the lectern.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I'd like to invite Fire Chief Ben Lane and our special guest, Sparky the Fire Dog, to And Fire Marshal Jeremy Hicks. Sorry, Jeremy. No. So whereas the City of Issaquah is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at the greatest risk of fire. And whereas home fires cause 3,800 civilian deaths in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and a home fire occurs every 93 seconds somewhere in this nation. Smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to the dangers in the event of a fire. Whereas Issaquah residents should be sure everyone in their home understands the sound of a smoke alarm and knows how to respond. And whereas Eastside Fire and Rescue responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrences of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection, education. And whereas Eastside Fire and Rescue provides all hazard response services to respond to fire, medical hazardous material, technical rescue, and emergency services needs of the City of Issaquah. And whereas the City of Issaquah and Eastside Fire and Rescue work together to protect and educate the community regarding fire prevention and safety. And there, now therefore, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim that October 6th through 12th, 2024, to be Fire Prevention Week in the City of Issaquah, and we encourage the community to support efforts to prevent fires and to prepare by practicing home fire escapes. We ask that the community join us in thanking Issaquah Public and Fire Safety Servants, Eastside Fire and Rescue. Not sure who to give it to, but I'm thinking Sparky.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ray. The next item on our agenda this evening under special business is ID 1709, Hindu American Heritage Month proclamation, and I invite Deputy Council President De Michelle to the lectern to invite up some guests. Oh, I was going to check with the city clerk. If Seva is in the audience, is Seva here tonight? Okay. Doesn't look like she was able to make it. Thank you, Deputy Council President. The next and last special business this evening is ID 1711, Substance Abuse Prevention Month proclamation, and I'd like to invite Marnie Maraldo to join me, the Executive Director of Influence the Choice, and members of the Student Youth Board who are here with her tonight, Elise, Kiana, and Anvesha.
Whereas on a continuum from experimental use to tragic fatal overdose, substance use by our youth is a complex reality. And while most young people in our community do not use substances of any kind, hair influences, social norms, genetics, and other risk factors conspire to create a profile that make it difficult for some to escape. And whereas, according to the 2023 Issaquah School District's Healthy Youth Survey, 12th graders reported in the past 30 days for what is considered consistent use at the following rates: vaping products, 8%, alcohol, 13%, marijuana, 9%, alcohol drinking while using marijuana, 3%. Whereas many of our young people do not develop the skills needed to productively manage adolescent development substance-free. And whereas substance use can and does negatively impact the development and potential of our youth to succeed. And whereas substance use prevention has a greater impact than later intervention by influencing a child's early life towards positive behaviors and productivity. And whereas, a cost-benefit analysis by the National Institute for Drug Abuse in October of 2021 indicates a savings of anywhere from $13 to $26 for every $1 spent on effective school-based programming. And whereas the benefits of increasing protective factors while reducing risk factors and engaging social-emotional learning provides a universal benefit to all our youth. And whereas by stopping substance use before it starts, we can prevent the disease of addiction, and we can create stronger neighborhoods in our community. Now, therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the City of Issaquah, Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polley, the Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 to be Substance Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Issaquah. Marnie, would you like to share a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Polley, city and city council members. On behalf of Influence the Choice and the entire community, I want to extend our heartfelt gratitude for your recognition of October as Substance Use Prevention Month. This proclamation highlights the critical importance of raising awareness and supporting efforts to prevent youth substance use in our city. Influence the Choice has proudly partnered with the city in reducing and preventing youth use of alcohol, nicotine products, cannabis, and other drugs. Thanks to this partnership, we've seen a dramatic decrease in substance use among students in the district and connected with countless parents and caregivers, equipping them to have healthy, productive conversations with their children about the impact of substances on young developing brains. We are deeply thankful for the ways the City of Issaquah has supported our work. Your leadership not only brings attention to the issue that affects families and young people, but it also reinforces the commitment to creating a healthier, safer community for everyone. Together, we can continue to educate, support, and empower our youth to make positive choices. Thank you for being strong advocates of prevention. And then I think Kiana Graves has something to say.
Hi, my name's Kiana Graves. I am a junior at Gibson Lake High School, and substance use prevention is important to me because I've seen its effects on family members in my life. Just two weeks ago, one of my family members got in an accident while under the influence and is now spending the next several months in Harborview. He is one of the many family members who have had negative consequences due to drugs and/or alcohol. I want to help ensure that this doesn't happen to any of my immediate family or friends. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who came for the celebration of our visiting Moroccan artists and all of the volunteers in the room, as well as for all the proclamations. It was really nice to see it full house tonight. Council is now going to move on to audience comments, and this is the time when members of the public may address council in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first, and if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. There is also a public hearing tonight on AB 8912, Initiative Number 2117, Carbon Tax Credit Trading, November 5th, 2024 ballot item, and a consideration of a resolution to oppose. Comments on this particular item should be made during that public hearing, which will occur later in the meeting. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak?
Yes.
Thank you. So for those making comments this evening, you're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted unless they are related to tonight's public hearing on Initiative 2117. Those comments should be made later on the agenda under the public hearing. These direct comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern in the center of the room. There's a button on the center of the base that you can press to get the red light on. State your name, address, and relationship to the city, and speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and if you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, we will have to continue the meeting, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting when you're able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Public comments, written and verbal, are important aspects of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you all for taking the time to address us this evening. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Janet Eery.
Janet? Oh, you're in the room? Fantastic. If you go on the base of the microphone, there's a button.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you. I'm Janet Eery, and I'm the president of the Issaquah Philharmonic Orchestra, and I wanted to help you in celebrating your month of For the Arts and Humanities. Of course, it's very exciting to be participating in this month, and we're having rehearsal right now as we speak, but I wanted to give you some follow-up and thank you for your support. Currently, we're in the process of organizing our May Spring Concert, which is also a really important one, which is a fundraiser for the Issaquah Food Bank, and that's going to be taking place in the Issaquah School District, one of your high school auditoriums, and I want to thank you for that support. We're so excited to be able to actually perform in the community and support the community, and of course, with our fundraising efforts. So thank you so much, and what a pleasure to be here tonight. What a great meeting. Thank you all. So I'm going to go to rehearsal right now. Thanks all very much.
You picked a good one, Janet. It's a good night. Thank you. Next on the list, City Clerk?
Paul Quinn.
Paul, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Paul Quinn, and I live in Sammamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual that cares about recycling and composting and reducing what we send to the landfill. Let's start with a reminder, 2/3 of our trash can actually be recycled or composted. When I speak of diversion rates, that means the percent of disposed tonnage diverted away from the landfill into recycling and food scraps, composting. I provided you with four handouts. The first handout in Table 3 shows Issaquah's updated diversion rate year-to-date through July, and it's up about 1% versus year-to-date July 2023. That's good. However, as the top graphic in the handout indicates, this one here, Issaquah's diversion rate has not really improved since 2021. Issaquah's 2030 diversion rate goal is 70%, and that large gap indicates the city needs a new innovative approach to improve its diversion rates. Handout number 2 provides several specific recommendations for improving diversion rates. In addition, I'm pleased to recommend a pilot program called Smart Disposal to help significantly improve this city's diversion rates. The cost of the pilot program is approximately $200,000. Handout number 3 outlines how Smart Disposal works in some detail. I'll also now briefly describe what Smart Disposal is. Smart Disposal weighs each container emptied by the hauler for each single-family home. This system, through a postcard mailed to each resident, provides data specific to the resident based on their address, including a landfill diversion rate per pickup and trend line over time. I provided handout number 4 to show an example postcard report residents would receive. This system helps us move from a toss-and-forget mindset toward making better choices. We all know that feedback through measurement works because our water, electricity, and gas are all metered, helping us to moderate our use. Smart Disposal effectively meters our actual use of the disposal utility. During the pilot, the city will work with its hauler and a limited set of residents to demonstrate the effectiveness of Smart Disposal in significantly improving diversion rates. I'm quite willing to meet with city staff to review how the pilot works and provide detailed information of the budgeted cost and activities in the project. People in the City of Issaquah want to live sustainably. They need innovative tools and the leadership of the council to help them increase their rate of recycling and composting. Join me in implementing a Smart Disposal pilot, and let's get a diversion rate moving to achieve the city's 2030 target. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there anyone else who has signed up to participate in audience comments?
No one else has signed up. We do have about eight individuals with us online, but I don't see that any of them are indicating a desire to speak under general comments.
Hey, just checking in the room. Is there anyone else who would like to provide comments during audience comments tonight? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody indicating as well. But I want to thank the residents that came by tonight to talk about moving some concerts back into the Issaquah School District facilities, and also some recommendations for improving Issaquah's community diversion rates. We thank you for your comments and the time that you took to come to the council meeting and present. In the meantime, if you want to contact your council, you can reach them at any time at citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. The next item of business this evening is the Consent Calendar. I have one revision to this consent calendar on AB 8906 that I'd like to explain to council, and that is a mid-year Planning Policy Commission appointment. We did receive word that one of our two appointees to be confirmed tonight was withdrawn. This is Michael Wang, and we are proposing the following substitute motion for this item, which would be to confirm the mayor's appointment to the Planning Policy Commission of John Crass, motion to regular member from an alternate term expiring April 30th, 2026, effective November 1st, 2024. Is there any objection to substituting that motion for item H on the consent calendar? Thanks, I'm not seeing any indication. Hearing none, that motion has been substituted, and the revised version will be approved upon approval of the consent calendar. Are there any committee chairs who have comments on any of the items on the consent calendar? Also seeing negative head shakes. So the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? I'm not seeing any indication. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the substitute consent.
Can we just, yeah, can we call it the consent calendar as presented or as substituted?
As, maybe as amended?
As amended.
Yep, the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not seeing an indication. The motion on the table that's been seconded is to approve the consent calendar as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries 5-0. Now we're going to move into our public hearing. This is the next item of business, AB 8912, Initiative Number 2117, Carbon Tax Credit Trading. It's on the November 5th, 2024 ballot, and the consideration for the council this evening is a resolution to oppose. So we will conduct a public hearing, and council will have a discussion. State law allows the city council to support or oppose a ballot measure at an open public meeting. One of the requirements is that the council members and members of the public with opposing viewpoints have the opportunity to be heard. For that reason, we've scheduled a public hearing tonight. This will be the public's opportunity to express support or opposition for the proposed resolution opposing Initiative Number 2117. Following the public hearing, the city council will deliberate. I'd like to ask City Administrator Wally Bobquetz to introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. This Agenda Bill seeks city council approval of a resolution opposing Washington State Ballot Initiative Number 2117, which is qualified for the November 5th general election. The initiative would prohibit any state agencies from implementing a cap-and-trade or cap-and-tax program. Additionally, it would repeal the 2021 Washington Climate Commitment Act, the state law that created a cap-and-invest carbon program aiming at reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 95% by 2050 and preparing the state for the future low-carbon economy. Included in your packet is Exhibit B, is a summary of state funds made possible by the Climate Commitment Act. This item is before the council at the request of the council president and the deputy council president. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Administrator. We will have questions and answer after the public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:43, and just repeat that if you're joining us virtually and you'd like to make comments during this public hearing, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press star 3. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. And if you're in this room and you didn't sign up to speak, I will ask for other speakers before we close this portion of the meeting. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire?
Yes, we have three people signed up. The first is in the room, and Nukem.
Welcome in.
All right, is it working? Can you hear me okay? Awesome. So I am here to support the City of Issaquah in opposing I-2117. The Climate Commitment Act is so important for not just Issaquah but for the entire state. So I'll just go ahead and give a little more history about it. So in 2021, the Climate Commitment Act was voted into law, and ecology then wrote the cap-and-trade and all of the rules. And in January of 2023, it got up and going, and in February of 2023, the state of Washington had our first auction. And since then, until now, or August, maybe possibly, it has raised $2.7 billion to go to great projects in Washington. And the way it's raising the money is companies that pollute more than 25 metric tons of CO2 equivalent per year need to either invest in their own companies to reduce their CO2 equivalent pollution, or invest in allocations, which are then turned into grants. And there's a lot of really amazing grants that have been filled, that are happening all over Washington State. And most importantly, here in Issaquah, Issaquah has already gotten over $1 million in grants allocated and secured for really great projects. And unfortunately, we still, we might still have, or maybe you could tell me, do we still have the other ones, the over $3 million in grants? Are those still pending?
Can't answer questions now, but a council member can definitely ask that question after public comment.
Great. So for those, those grants are for solar panels on Pickering Barn, solar panels and a battery on the senior center, and some other great projects like that. So I just think it's really wise, and I'm really grateful that the City of Issaquah is opposing 2117. Looks like I still have some more time. So that's how it directly affects Issaquah, but it also affects residents in Issaquah because the funds, for every dollar, it's a multiplier, for every dollar that is spent from CCA funds in Washington State, that $1 multiplies to $13. So a lot of money is going to be coming from federal money, out-of-state money, and then of course, the cities and counties will reinvest, invest in these projects as well. So that's all good, plus, there's more. 45,000 jobs will be created, and those are really good-paying jobs with a mean, I think it's an average of over $90,000 or around $90,000. So great jobs, a lot of them, which is good for Issaquah residents. And then also, all of these projects are either reducing greenhouse gas or helping create the fish passages in Washington, carbon sequestration, and just helping us to reach our climate goals so we can reduce those emissions, which helps the residents in Issaquah because then there will be less climate chaos. We have a better future ahead of us, and I think that's probably about all I need to say. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ann. Just one clarification for those in the room and those that may be watching. We interchange the words "city" a lot to mean a lot of different things: city administration, city council, and sometimes we use "city" to describe both. Tonight, and during this Agenda Bill, this is a council action, so it is a city council decision. The administration is neutral on these issues. So this is completely a city council action tonight, just to make sure that was clear with everybody. Thank you very much, Ann.
Oh, thank you.
Who is next on the list, City Clerk?
Yes, we have a virtual commenter, Deepa Sivaraman. Deepa, I'm making you a panelist now. You should have the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on. and can choose to turn your video on.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Deepa Sivirajan. I'm the local policy manager at Climate Solutions, which is a clean energy nonprofit based in the Pacific Northwest. And I am justifying today in strong support of this solution to oppose the passage of initiative 2117. Ann did such a great job at explaining 2117, but I'll just reiterate some of the same points. Initiative 2117 would repeal our state's innovative cap and invest program that is part of nation, that is part of our nation-leading Climate Commitment Act. The CCA finally makes the biggest climate polluters in our state to both cut their pollution and pay for it and brings unprecedented revenue to the state for climate conservation and clean energy projects in our communities. Repealing this law would strip billions in investments in community priorities across every part of Washington, in addition to the funding specific to Issaquah that Ann did a great job of outlining. There are programs in all parts of the state that also impact all of us since climate change is a global issue. There are programs to protect salmon habitat and clean up our waterways, clean up toxic air pollution through replacing defill field trucks and buses and supporting regional transit, enhancing the resilience of our forests against wildfires, and reducing the increasing strain of utility costs, all of which support Issaquah's climate operational goals set forth in Issaquah's 2021 Climate Action Plan. The chorus of voices opposing this harmful backwards initiative is large and diverse and only continues to grow. Small businesses, tribal nations, doctors and nurses, firefighters, certain labor unions, environmental groups, and more have come together to oppose initiative 2117. And I urge this council to pass this resolution and do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Deepa. City clerk? Who's next on our signup list?
Next, we have Landon Halverson, who's also attending virtually. Landon, I'll make you a panelist now. You should have the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Sorry, can folks hear me?
Perfectly. Welcome, Landon.
Sorry, I had to call in. I'm on the east business trip. It's 11 o'clock here, but it was important enough to come on and speak with you all. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you all. I am here, frankly, to urge the council to vote no on this proposed legislation, and if nothing else, to consider abstaining from this piece of legislation or this amendment, or rather, this, I'm sorry, this resolution. It's late here. I feel that frankly, as I, as I look at the structure of this proposition, it feels very performative. I'm not fully understanding how or why at this stage, less than a month until the election, the city of Issaquah is in a position, frankly, to make change on how people are going to vote on this issue and where residents are ultimately going to fall. And I'm concerned that this action, regardless of where you stand on it, does not really serve the people of Issaquah in the way that we expect our city council to. That being said, I would ultimately support a no vote if you are to vote on this, on this proposition. And I feel that way, frankly, in large part because I, as a resident, have been frustrated by the lack of transparency and accountability from our state on the Climate Commitment Act. And I believe that it's incumbent on our state legislators in the 2025 session to find a better, more transparent, more accountable way to reduce carbon emissions in the state of Washington that doesn't rely on the outdated models of the CCA. Frankly, like I've mentioned, I'm concerned about the transparency and accountability aspect. We were told by our governor and by others that gas would only rise a few cents as a result of this bill and that it could potentially even go down. That, of course, did not materialize, and that is concerning. We were promised that we would have metrics, that we'd have a whole website dedicated to tracking the metrics of the CCA so that we could understand just how well it was truly reducing carbon emissions. That website was up for a couple of months. The data it showed was not promising. It was ultimately pulled, the website was pulled into my knowledge as of this evening. Last time I checked, that website is not back up for public use, for public viewing. And then finally, we had a state economist who came forward. He attempted to say, hey, this is going to cause gas prices to rise between 45 and 50 cents, which is almost to the cent what we've seen the increase in gas prices be since the Climate Commitment Act's implementation. He was ultimately fired. He was let go from his position, and that is currently making its way through the courts right now. So I'm concerned with the way that the Climate Commitment Act has been rolled out. I'm concerned about whether or not it's truly making the impact that we wanted it to. Our ecology department has been saying for years that its actions were going to reduce carbon emissions in our state. They have remained largely flat since at least 2012. And so ultimately, this lack of accountability and transparency with such an exorbitant cost. I mean, ultimately, we talk about the funding, right? Something to tune with $2.1 billion. That ultimately comes from taxpayers, taxpayers who are already struggling. And without that transparency and accountability, I'm really concerned about how we'll be able to truly understand the effects it has on Issaquah residents, whether or not it's truly reducing carbon emissions in the way it needs to, and whether or not it's really the best plan moving forward. I think that the state and state legislators could come up with a much more efficient plan that doesn't rely on these things. And I would encourage the state to do just that, and I would encourage the council to, to encourage the state to do that and to vote no on this so that we can get a better deal.
Thank you, Landon. City clerk, is there anyone else indicating online a desire to speak?
Mayor, we do have a number of other folks with us online, and I've just sent them a note to see if they'd like to comment. But I'm not seeing anyone raise a hand at this time.
So I'm going to come to the room. Could you raise your hand if you'd like to comment on this tonight? Just so I get, why I say, one, two. Is that it? Okay. Husband and wife, you're going to have to do the rock, paper, scissors to determine who comes up first? Ladies first. Oh, David, you are so chivalrous. It's on. Okay.
Great. All right. City council, thank you for having this hearing. I really appreciate. I know that it takes a lot, and it's not the normal thing to weigh in on state issues. And the fact that this issue is affecting Issaquah is important, and thank you for doing that. You've heard already from other people. I don't want to repeat, but this initiative dismantles the Climate Commitment Act. And this act is designed to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions while funding the transition to clean energy. It's only been going for two years, really, since, you know, the auctions started in 2023. I don't think it's had a full chance to see how it works. It seems to be working from the angle of providing funds for clean energy projects. And we need, you know how hard it is to get data? When we have our greenhouse gas emissions, it's always a little bit behind when we have our inventory. I do believe it will show an effect. And this destructive initiative would keep us from getting future grants for the senior center and Pickering Barn and many others that people have mentioned. Now, we do depend on these grants. We can't afford to do the kinds of things that need to be done in our Issaquah Climate Action Plan in order to reach our goals of greenhouse gas emissions. And the council approved that plan so that we could do just that and be a part of the solution to this crisis. How disheartening now to halt all that progress on that as, as all these climate efforts of the city and many other communities in the state. Those who favor initiative 2117 say that the CCA increases gas prices. However, there are facts being collected about that by the U.S. Energy Information Administration, which has collected this information since 2003. I sent a chart to the council via my written comments that shows that the gas prices today, and this is average gas prices, not King County. We're always higher than everybody. The average Washington gas prices today are lower than two years ago before the Climate Commitment Act. They haven't gone up. They may have initially gone up, but those are waves that everybody's going up and down. Then the Washington gas price over the national average has actually lessened since the Climate Commitment Act. And these, I sent you the sources of that information and all the data. The Seattle Times confirmed this reasoning in their editorial opposing 2117. Their research showed that average gas prices in the western states are historically higher than the rest of the country, unfortunately. But prices seem to rise and fall in tandem. And there are other reasons beyond the CCA that are causing the gas prices to rise and fall, which they do. But more details about that I also sent you in a handout. So I'd like you to take that into consideration as well for our citizens, and the affordability of gas, I know, is an issue to a lot of people. So based on that, and all that, really, all that we've, we've worked for in the city, I, I urge you, and really, we're counting on you to take a bold stand for climate by resolving against initiative 2117. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Dave? Ann, you dropped something, glasses or a pen? Come on up, Dave.
David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. This morning, hurricane in, in the Gulf was a one. It's now a five. It's just amazing, the, the issues we're facing globally with climate. In this area, climate is huge to, and it's developed, it's provided us with an amazing forest, water, salmon, and all kinds of things that could potentially disappear. Over Salmon Days weekend, I spent most of my time at the Issaquah Alps booth just raving about Issaquah and the other partners that we have, such as the county and the State Department of Natural Resources and state parks, about trees we have, the water we have, the salmon we have. All of this is directly tied to protecting our climate and protecting that climate or enhancing it. We could lose so many of the, the draws that people have for wanting to live in Issaquah and wanting to live in this area, the greater area, if we, we do not handle our climate crisis properly. So please take good action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. City clerk, has anyone online since indicated they would like to speak? Because I'll do a final call in the room. No. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to address the council? Victor, come on up. And then I see a second hand back there.
Thank you. Victor Bello, 1105 Lewis Lane. I'm not as well-informed in the US as everybody else has spoke. And this is one that I've wrestled with since I learned about it in one, in multiple ways. First, it, it was many, many, many years ago, decades even, that scientists started warning us about those two degrees, that we can't pass that threshold. We already did. We blew that, it, like, that, the rooster sang on that one already, right? So, and we can see the catastrophic consequences of that. Florida is basically going to disappear in a few years and because of, you know, hurricanes and all this stuff. It's just horrible catastrophes happening all over the place because of the climate change. Now, opposing 2117 allows us to hold accountable the corporations that don't do enough to meet their commitments, right? To addressing something. We failed generations to come. I'd be surprised if 100 years from now, my kids are not going to suffer greatly or their, or my grandchildren are going to suffer greatly from what we've done to them, right? And then, on the other side, allowing them to, to cap and trade through what we have in place today gives us the benefits of using some of that income to have initiatives that, you know, we can do some good here locally, right? That's the only way that we can actually affect. I'm not here to say vote yes, vote no. There's ways smarter than I am. You reach that decision. It's just, we've got to look at not only the, the, I mean, the reality that we live on right now, which is, this is happening. It's happening now, and you can see it locally. We have, we received less water this year than the previous year, and it's been happening for five years in a row, and it's going to continue going, getting worse, right? We, we, but we can yell at somebody or not, but like, it's, I don't think the needle's going to move too much. If we can figure out ways that we can get some benefits, like with the current CCA and giving us those, that, that, that stream of revenue into the city that we can use for making us ready for those catastrophic events that are coming and building our environmental response in our communities to deal with that, making us self-sustainable with water that we're continuing to buy from other sources, figuring out how we can make ourselves whole in the upcoming storm. Why not? So, thank you.
Thank you, Victor. And I think you really downplay your intelligence because I've worked with you a lot, and you're a super smart guy. And we have one more person in the room who would like to come up and comment today?
Hi, my name's Julie Carr. I'm an Issaquah resident. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I thought I would just share a little of my personal experience. I moved to Issaquah just over two years ago, came from a different state that does not have a Climate Commitment Act, doesn't have that programming or funding. And I noticed right away when I moved to Issaquah that there was opportunities to learn about and receive rebates for heat pumps, which I had been curious about but had never had an opportunity to really learn about. So I really appreciated that and that the program also extended to people who didn't have a lot of extra money for investing in their properties. So those rebates, those helps with utility bills and installation of energy-efficient equipment, just, just, I was so impressed. I was so grateful for the opportunity to consider that and that there were installers and companies that were able to do that work because there was an interest in having those systems. I don't know that there's very many times that I'm out and about in the summer where I don't hear a pretty extensive conversation about installing air conditioning, heat pumps, the heat, the humidity. It's on our minds here in Issaquah. We're all wanting to do what we can to keep ourselves comfortable. We're also, a lot of people very concerned about climate change. So I really appreciate those pieces that have been brought to light. And my understanding that a good part of that is because of the Climate Commitment Act. A couple of the other pieces that are important to me are also the expansion of the Regional Air Quality Monitoring Network. I really appreciate being able to understand what the air quality is in Issaquah in any given day, and expanding that is important. We also have, through CCA, the opportunity to reduce pollution from heavy-duty trucks. And I personally find that to be something that's just a powerful reminder of pollution when trucks are on the road[1720.70] when trucks are on the road, and there's a lot of particulate and pollution coming out of their tailpipe. The Capacity for the Health Environment for All Act to be implemented to tribes and overburdened communities is also really important to me. I just appreciate your time. I urge you to oppose this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Looking at the room again, Larry, come on up.
My name's Larry Franks. I'm a 52-year resident of Issaquah. And as many of you suspect, I look at climate change through the eyes of a salmon. Let me explain what it looks like to him. Salmon follow what I call the Goldilocks zone. If you look at the ice cap that advances and recedes over millennia, my salmon like to be right at the edge of that. So they're in cold water, they're not frozen, but it's not hot. Here's what the history looks like. 300 years ago, the Goldilocks zone extended down past Southern California. Sacramento River produced tens of millions of Chinook. Last year, it produced roughly 4 million Chinook, and the recovery folks were thrilled. But that compared to millions. So the Goldilocks zone has been moving south. It has passed us. The Goldilocks zone has passed Columbia River. Columbia River used to produce 14 to 18 million fish a year. Last year, it produced 1 million fish. Now, where's it going to go? Goldilocks zone is now Bristol Bay. Here's the real critical part. The last time that this happened, millennia ago, it took 3,000 years for that retreat to occur. It has taken 300 years for that retreat from Sacramento being, producing fish, to only Bristol Bay producing fish. It's climate change. It's happening. And I'm proud of the City Council taking a position on this initiative that would enormously set us back if it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Last call for anyone in the room who would like to speak. Not seeing any hands raised. Tisha, did you have anyone online? Okay, well, thank you to everyone who came tonight. We heard from seven different folks. Council also received emails, maybe double the quantity, with the same kind of flavor that you heard tonight, which is that you should pass your resolution, you shouldn't pass your resolution, why are you talking about this? This isn't council business. So kind of the same flavor as you heard in this room. Take no action, take action, take the opposite action of what you propose. So the very consistent feedback that they're receiving. City Council, do you have any objection to my closing the public hearing? Looking around and not seeing any. So I'll close the public hearing at 8:11. Council questions? Maybe we could get clarification, City Administrator, about what projects are currently funded and what projects would not be funded, because we did say we would respond to that.
In a message from our Sustainability Manager, we've had two grants that were unsuccessful, but we plan to submit for the next round of grants, and approximately $2.5 million worth of grants are still pending.
Still pending. Thank you very much. If I'm not seeing any council questions, would someone be prepared to make a motion? Council President?
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 2024-22, opposing the passage of Washington State Ballot Initiative Number 2117 concerning carbon tax credit trading.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there council discussion? Council President?
Thank you. You know, I didn't come by this easy. I think we, as a council, try and be conservative when it comes to state ballot measures or initiatives. Our job isn't to tell people how they should feel about any particular area in general. This is different because it affects our city and our city finances. And so that recognition of the direct impact and the fact that we, as a city, have made such strides when it comes to climate action, and our ICAP, our Issaquah Climate Action Plan, and the Environmental Board Group that has so advocated for this area, for making sure that it is constantly on our minds of areas that they want to see, you know, us make a difference on, recognizing our very real inability to take action on that without some of these grants that are then funded by a program that also has the impact and the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I think that that combination of all of that was what brought this to the forefront. I want to thank community members who really pushed and encouraged us and kept us updated when other cities were taking a look at this. And so I will be supporting our resolution tonight to oppose I-2117. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Other comments? Deputy Council President?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I too came to this not quickly. I think that we've had a longtime tradition of not weighing in on statewide or national issues, and I think it's generally a very wise policy. But as Council President Walsh said, this is different. This is different. And when we looked at the numbers that were put together by our Sustainability Manager, that we have already received over $1 million, that we are in line for $2.5 or $3 million more, and there are very limited ways that we can support our sustainability efforts and our climate change actions without that funding. And so it would devastate those programs if 2117 were to pass. There were comments that we received online that seemed to indicate that the projects were kind of chosen randomly. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody in the public understands, we had a long, long process to get to the Climate Change Action Plan. We had a long, long process for choosing those projects. And this is really an amazingly community-based effort to clean up our environment and clean up the climate, the things that are impinging on our climate, I should say. And it's been very community-based. And I feel as though we are really reflecting our community's desire to make positive change in the area of climate. And so for that reason, I will also, it's very complicated, I will also be supporting the opposition to 2117. I think that our community, the majority of our community strongly supports that position. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too will be supporting the resolution this evening to oppose Initiative 2117. And it really comes down to the fact, which is described in one of the clauses in the resolution, that the initiative would adversely impact our ability to carry out our city's Climate Action Plan. We went through a very thorough, very thorough process of including comments from community members, businesses, over the course of years, to develop a climate action plan that would set us on a path to being a more resilient and healthy community. And we asked the community to hold us accountable to that plan when we passed it, our city's Climate Action Plan. And as is laid out in our materials this evening, we have millions of dollars of grants we've received and pending, including funding specifically to implement our Climate Action Plan that is at stake. And so for that reason, I think that it is really important that we follow through on our commitment that we made to the community to take action on climate and to follow through on the projects that have been laid out in our very community-oriented Climate Action Plan. And I also wanted to just read one part from the Climate Action Plan, which is that, "This plan sets Issaquah on a clear and well-defined path to transition to clean energy sources, be more energy-conscious, diversify our transportation options, reduce waste, and ensure that our natural environment thrives." And so for that reason, I will be supporting the resolution this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other comments? Councilmember Ray?
Thanks, Mayor Pauli. I'm going to take the opposite stand. And this is, I should have saved my notes from the last time we had a discussion about it, ballot measure. And it really has nothing to do with 2117. It has nothing to do with global warming. It has everything to do with, I don't believe that is our position, regardless of the arguments I've heard tonight, to take a stand on an initiative. We can find funding sources. I think we would do our citizens a greater service than passing a resolution if we were to provide more information about the impacts of 2117 to the public at large. And I think that I feel strongly that this is a dangerous precedent we're setting here. And we have a community that, and we have a council that's very united on most issues. And I worry that down the road, that may not be the case. And this could become a political tool that could have disastrous impacts on our community. So quite honestly, I am wholeheartedly opposed to Initiative 2117. But that's not the question that I think is important. I think the question is, is it the role of this council to pass a resolution in support or opposition to 2117? And I just fundamentally do not believe that that is our.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. I'll be supporting the resolution this evening. We have done some great things with the climate action money that we've received from the state through this initiative. And our Issaquah Climate Action Plan doesn't move forward as robustly as we'd like to if we don't have the funding and support for it. We did some building decarbonization over the last year or so. We've also had opportunities to provide heat pumps to our citizens in town, helping them to become more energy-efficient. Direct impacts to our citizens also include the fact that the city is going to be working toward putting in city-owned EV chargers, which will be offered at a lower rate than privately-owned charging infrastructure. I think that's important because the city is using its buying power and its size as a player in the climate action structure to provide infrastructure that will allow people to, you know, charge their cars a little bit more efficiently at a little bit lower price. Those are the small things that come into effect for our citizens when we vote no on this particular initiative, but vote yes for tonight's resolution. So I'll be supporting the resolution this evening, and I look forward to any further conversation we have.
Great. Any additional comments? Thank you, Council, for your comments. If there is no further discussion, the motion before Council is to approve Resolution Number 2024-22, opposing the passage of Washington State Ballot Initiative Number 2117 concerning carbon tax credit trading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That carries four to one. Thank you. We are going to move on to our regular business items. We have a couple of items this evening. We'll be starting with AB 8882, Credit Card Service Fee Policy. The ask before Council this evening is to approve the resolution, and I'd like to invite Deputy Finance Director Jennifer Raine to the podium. Welcome, Jennifer.
I am Jennifer Raine, the Deputy Finance Director. Tonight, I will present on Agenda Bill Number 8882 on Credit Card Processing Fee Cost Recovery. The purpose of this agenda bill and presentation this evening is to request City Council adoption of a new proposed credit or debit card and e-check processing fee policy. This is following the direction of the Services, Safety, and Parks Committee on June 25, 2024. Included in tonight's presentation, we will provide a background summarizing the key findings on this subject, highlights from the proposed policy, and final recommendations for council On September 27, 2023, Council President Lindsay Walsh brought a new business item to the City Council requesting administration review, the city's customer usage of credit or debit cards as a method of payment, and how the city addressed credit or debit card processing fees. The administration responded with a memo presented to Council on October 23, 2023, after which the administration was invited to present at the Services, Safety, and Parks Committee on March 18, and subsequently on June 25 of this year. During the committee meeting on June 25, the administration presented two options to the committee to provide direction on policy creation. Option number one, customers pay credit card or credit or debit card processing fees directly. Or option number two, customers pay credit or debit card processing fees indirectly. Of the two options presented, the committee favored option number one, where customers would be fully responsible for paying payment processing fees associated with using a debit or credit card and e-checks. E-checks are an electronic method of payment where a customer pays using their bank account rather than a credit or debit card. The city currently absorbs all fees associated with these customer transactions, which amounted to $163,870 as of August 31 of this year. The new policy is projected to recover an estimated $240,000 annually. This recovery will offset the costs currently absorbed by the city for credit or debit card and e-check payment processing fees. The trend analysis on customer payment methods used showed an increase in credit or debit cards and e-checks. Accepting credit or debit cards and e-check payments provides customers with convenience to pay the city for services provided, safety, and quick receipt of payment for charges of services. Based on the feedback we received from the committee, the administration has drafted a new policy proposal, the Credit or Debit Card and E-Check Processing Fee Policy. Of notable mention, the policy will include details about the processing fee rates customers will be responsible for. Customers will be responsible for paying a processing fee as a percentage of the total sales amount, or a flat fee as a dollar amount, as determined by the payment processor. Where the payment processor cannot collect the payment processing fee directly from customers, the city will collect a payment processing service fee from customers to offset these costs to the city. In addition to the policy outlining the customer's responsibility of paying processing fees, the proposed policy will also include details on alternative payment options. The city will continue to accept alternative payment options, such as personal checks or cash, which do not incur additional fees. Notification, customers will be informed of the processing fees prior to completing their payment. Monitoring and review, the policy will be reviewed periodically to assess its effectiveness and adjust as necessary. The processing fees that will affect customers are included here. This fee is determined by the payment processor and collected directly from the customer. The customer will only see one charge on their credit, on their card statement that will include both the city's charges for services or the sales amount and the payment processing fee. By having the payment processor collect the processing fee directly from customers, it will simplify the collection process and avoid additional staff oversight. The fees vary due to individual payment processor fee schedules and based on sales transaction volumes. These fees may be adjusted over time as the payment processor decides, although it is expected this would happen very rarely, if at all. Any future changes to these initial fee rates would be communicated to customers in advance. The only unknown fee rate is for mybuildingpermit.com due to software limitations of implementing a customer-paid processing fee. We do not have an expected implementation timeline for mybuildingpermit.com and continue to work on a solution with the IT department. The Services, Safety, and Parks Committee recommended, after the June 25 presentation, to discontinue the absorption of credit or debit card and e-check payment processing fees. Adopting the proposed policy will assign payment processing fees to be the responsibility of the customer, with the preference of customers paying processing fees directly to the payment processor, and when this is not possible due to processor, and when this is not possible due to software limitations, by way of the city collecting an additional service fee to offset payment processing fees paid for Following the information provided in this presentation, the administration offers the following options for the council. Do nothing and continue absorbing the costs associated with credit or debit card and e-check processing fees for customer payments. Or, policy adoption and implementation. Apply the adopted credit or debit card and e-check processing fee policy to the specific departments ready for implementation by January 2025. Delayed implementation will be applied to mybuildingpermit.com due to the software limitations we are currently working through. The administration, working closely with communications and the IT department, outlined the following implementation timeline. Once policy is formally adopted, the administration will provide training to staff of departments affected beginning in October. After that, provide communication to customers on these upcoming changes for their awareness and planning, beginning in November. And finally, we will work with the various payment processors and softwares in the month of January 2025 to make configuration changes. Due to the varying combinations of software and payment processors, each one must be implemented individually and will be staggered throughout the month of January. However, it is expected all known configuration changes will be implemented in January. Of the four individual customer-facing portals, we have an implementation plan that will follow the timeline and next steps previously outlined, and are awaiting policy adoption to implement. The only unknown implementation plan and timeline is for mybuildingpermit.com due to software limitations. We are still researching available options. The administration recommends council approval of this resolution adopting the new credit card or credit or debit card and e-check processing fee policy. The policy will enable the city to manage its financial resources more effectively. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Jennifer. Questions? Council President, and then Councilmember Hunt and Councilmember Ray?
Exciting times here. I, you know, I'm really excited about this. You mentioned that the My Building Permit, we don't have a solution for at this time. I was looking back at the Services Safety and Parks presentation that was given in June, I believe it was, and that memo mentioned that the city currently pays the merchant fees and gave rates of 1.67% to 3.27%. Is that still the case, that we know what the percentage amount is? Or has that changed?
So those rates that were included in there were sales revenue collected, and then the, you know, just a flat rate of how many payment processing fees we were paying to retrieve those, or to receive that revenue through those sources. So I, I do have updated numbers, and I can send those if those are something you want to see, for sure, but they are averaging about the same as the months go on.
So my next question, knowing that we know what the approximate rates are, could we, i-if we don't have a, an ability software-wise to recoup these fees, could we look at, and maybe this is a question for a city administrator, could we look at tacking on a, an additional fee of the 2% or 3% to building permit costs that we charge at this point?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. We could do that. I think we were concerned to have a consistent approach with this, and so this would be a one-off inconsistency with that. I think at this point, we'd like to continue to work with the building permit software. That's also going to be changing, as I think many of you know. But if the council would like us to pursue it, I guess a motion to that effect would be helpful, and we could come back at a future meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted questions on that area.
Okay. Before I go to Councilmember Hunt, I forgot to ask, Councilwoman March is not here this evening, and he's the Chair of the Services Safety and Parks Committee. Is there anybody on that committee? We should have one or two here that wants to add some comments about the committee discussion. Okay. Let's go to Councilmember DeMichele, and then we'll move into questions.
Right. And we did discuss that question. So I'll just, I have, thanks to Clerk Geiser, we have some notes here from the committee, so thank you so much. The committee noted that some people will still write checks. This was following the staff presentation. Committee members wondered whether to cap recovery at 2% across the board, and, and decided and came to the conclusion that that was a business expense that should be recoverable. And ultimately, we recommended full cost recovery, and that's to be reviewed every two years, and I believe that's reflected in the resolution that they're bringing in front of us right now. So that were, that was our deliberations. We had a pretty robust discussion about it, and had lots of questions answered, and ultimately recommended option number one, which is what was brought tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Another question on the MyBuildingPermit.com. My understanding is many other cities use MyBuildingPermit.com as well, and I'm wondering if there are other cities that do cost recovery using, using the same permitting system.
I'm not aware of other cities that are using the same methods. However, the software limitations that we've ran into so far, the, the option doesn't exist to, you know, as you're checking out and you use a debit or a credit card, and then it shows your total balance and adds a fee of X percent onto it. I think the limitation is that it doesn't have that ability. And then in addition, I think there is, you know, like we, the, the city does put 5% of a technology surcharge fee on everything that goes through MyBuildingPermit.com. That option is definitely there for this as well. The limitation is that it applies to every sale, whether a debit or credit card is used. So using, using that method would, would cause a little bit of trickiness at the, at the register to remove that fee if, if someone does not want to use a debit or credit card and pay that fee, and wants to write a check or pay in cash, too. So those are kind of the limitations of both angles of, of the options that we do know of at this time. And so that's why I think we're favoring the option of going and looking at more research to see what can be done, and knowing that MyBuildingPermit.com is used by many cities, and what other cities are doing as a solution as well.
Did you have another question, Councilmember Hunt? Okay. Councilmember Ray?
I'm going to take us in a slightly different direction. When you're talking about e-checks, is that ACH?
It is a type of ACH. Rather, it's, you know, the customer puts in their banking routing number and account number, and uses, you know, pays directly from their checking or savings account.
And so like, if I was in utility billing, and I was looking at auto pay, that would be ACH, and that would be affected by this?
That would, yes. And specifically for utility billing, they, they have the e-check option where you use your bank routing number and account number, and that's charged a flat fee of $1.95 is the current rate that the payment processor puts on those.
Cool. Have we done any looking particularly around cash? But what is the cost of cash handling and of processing checks?
We have not done a look into that to see what the, the cost benefit of, you know, of allowing that option, and, and the difference between that and electronic payments.
Yeah, I'll, I'll save my, my, my insights there for, for later, but I was just curious we had looked at. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Jennifer. Thanks for the great presentations you've done consistently through this entire process, coming back to the committee twice, and then this evening. Appreciate it. Can you clarify for me that if we do adopt this, the city is, in essence, saving $163,987 because we won't be paying those transaction fees any longer? We'll be putting it on the customer to pay those transaction fees?
That is correct.
Okay. And is it normal industry practice to have the customer, when they're getting their Ticketmaster tickets, or their, their, you know, Park Pass or what have you? Well, I guess not Park passes, but other transactions, is it typical that those fees are typically added, and they're kind of just, you know, fair that we're used to now, and people are used to as part of the credit card system?
That, that is what our research showed, that this is kind of an industry-wide accepted, you know, transaction that's added on to services that are done with a credit or debit card, or other means online. That, that was pretty consistent, what we saw, that we thought customers were familiar with, and experienced in other, other ways that they do online payments.
Great. Thank you very much.
I think everybody's had a chance to comment, so I'll be looking to see if anybody would like to make a motion. Council President?
Thank you. I will very happily move to approve Resolution Number 2024-23, Declaring Adoption of a New Credit/Debit Card and E-Check Processing Fee Policy.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there council discussion? Council President?
Thank you. You know, I identified this as actually a user of this system. I was very enthusiastic when the utility billing system went online. And then I went online and did it, and put in a credit card, and was like, oh my goodness, knowing as a business owner how much that can cost a business, I wanted to see how much this was costing the city. So as you saw a year ago, I put this forth as a new business request item. I had no idea whether this was going to be, you know, $20,000 or $1 million, because that was just an area that we didn't have transparency before. So I'm very excited that we are taking a look at this, you know, particularly looking at the Services Safety and Parks memo, and recognizing that, you know, in 2021, processing fees was just under $3,000. In 2022, it was just under $100,000. In 2023, it was just under $150,000. And now we're predicting in 2024 to be $240,000. So we recognize that these costs are going up. One of the big contributors to that is our utility billing, and the fact that we have brought that online, which is an excellent service to our customers, but that wasn't something that we budgeted for, you know? When, when we're looking at that as a utility bill, and that process, we need to recognize that when we make a change like that, we need to be cognizant of the impact on our general fund budget, on the enterprise fund budgets. And so I'm just really glad that we took a look at this, recognized what the potential impacts were to the city, and decided to do something about it. So I very much appreciate the staff time. You never know when you ask a question like this, what, what it's going to take. In this case, it took a year to get around on all of this. But it's an important way of us recognizing what the impacts are, and having the due diligence with our funding. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Ray?
I promised comments. I'm real supportive of the credit card fee, because that's actually fairly substantial, because it's a percentage. I got to tell you, I'm not really keen on the e-check fee, because it's a fixed amount. And I'm just, as a, having just recently renewed my tabs with the Department of Licensing in the state of Washington, they do charge a 3% fee if you use a credit card, but if you do an ACH transfer, it's free. And so from a, just a basic business perspective, checks are expensive to process. You've got to handle them, you've got to record them, you've got to take them to the bank, and the staff time adds up, and it's, so it's not free. So I'm just saying, to say cost versus free is not a fair assessment, because you have a cost to process a check. Handling cash is even more expensive, because you have all of the audits and all of the controls that you need to put in place to, to handle cash. So I think it's a false equivalency to, to say that. There's no cost associated with processing checks in cash, because I, I would suggest if you looked at the data, would actually be far, far more than an e-check, which is why the Department of Licensing makes e-checks free. So I think I can get behind this, but only if we are committed to the fact that we're going to do this for a period of time, and then we're going to evaluate it and say, does this really make sense for us? Are we being penny wise and pound foolish? Because my gut tells me we are. And so there's a cost, and I think we need to recognize that cost, and we can move forward with this thing. But I think it's also a bit of a, I mean, I'm now speaking as, as Lindsay Walsh, the consumer, I do auto pay on all of my utilities, and I like it, because it's easy, and I don't have to think about it, and it just gets processed. So it's easy for me, and if I was wanting to save that $1.95 and write a check, I would hate you. Just saying, because the cost to me of writing that check is far more than $1.95. That's my thoughts.
Thanks. Any other comments? Okay. Well, thank you for that. Oh, Council President?
I'll just put in an emphasis on that. I have similar experience with business fees that are paid to the state where they don't charge the ACH. So just want to put in the record that when we do come back and take a look at this, I want to recognize whether that, that is a, an area that we want to take a look at. So, thank you.
Okay. It looks like we've had no more council discussion. So the resolution before you, the motion before you is to approve Resolution Number 2024-23, Declaring Adoption of the New Credit Card and E-Check Processing Fee Policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Jennifer, very much. The next item under regular business is AB 8763, Veterans Memorial Plaza Projects, and the request before council this evening is to award the bid. And I'm inviting Park Planning and Development Manager, Robin Spear, to the podium. Or, I'm not, I'm inviting up the Director of Parks and Community Services to the podium, Jeff Watling. Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, council. Jeff Watling, Parks and Community Services Director, jumping in here first. All right. Well, yes, Robin Spear, Park Planning and Development Manager, and I are, are here and happy to, to present before you and request your authorization, or you awarding a construction bid for this project, a project that's gone by many names, as the agenda bill calls it, the Veterans Memorial Plazas Projects. I'm here to provide you a little bit of a, a background on the project, and then hand it over to Robin to talk through a little bit about the conceptual design, the bid award itself, recommendations and options before you, and our recommendation from administration. So the project itself, a little bit of a background, and that background really, in many ways, starts with you as council. As you recall, in summer of 2022, you asked staff to work closely with the park board on seeking and prioritizing and identifying a park project that could be considered to be funded through some of the ARPA funding, ARPA being the American Recovery Plan Act dollars that the city received at that time. In September of 2022, the park board voted, after a lot of work that summer, voted and recommended the Veterans Memorial Park, or Depot Park Pedestrian Park site as the preferred location for that funding. As I said in the intro, this is a project by many names. I hope what you find, as, as you see this project tonight, really the intent of this project is to serve as a first investment of creating a far more connected and cohesive park that's going to serve Old Town, that's going to take these spaces of pedestrian park, and depot park, and memorial field, and the senior center, and have them really develop a relationship with one another, and a better relationship with Front Street. So that recommendation came to you in September through some com- So that recommendation came to you in September through some conversations and discussions we had with you in October of that year. You sought interest and expressed your interest in adding Confluence Park and seeing what kind of investment we can make at Confluence Park, in particular, an investment in or around the Eck House as part of this ARPA project. So on October 17th of that year, you approved allocating $4 million of ARPA funding for these park projects. With that action...
Director, would you mind pushing your slides forward so those that are on cable can see it as well?
Yeah, maybe I will seek, I'm doing it on my screen, but it doesn't seem to be... Thank you. You may have heard, there's a number of HPs that have laptops that have had a few bugs. Mine is one of those 50s, so maybe that's what's happening. My apologies. It was looking just fine on my screen. Thank you for mentioning something, Councilmember Joe. Thank you, City Clerk Geezer. That, there's the outline. I'll cover the project background. Next slide. We went through those. So on October 17th, thank you, City Council authorized the ARPA funding, so work began in earnest early in 2023. We began working on conceptual planning, a lot of community engagement around that. That was all kicked off at that time. As Robin gives you an overview of the project, she'll highlight a lot of those groups that we did that engagement with. Outreach continued in 2023, again with that engagement and a community survey. You may recall in May of 2023, we came back to you, City Council, and gave you an update on the progress of that design work for both projects around Old Town as well as the Confluence Park project. You may recall at that time, we identified what we learned about the Eck House. We did a structural assessment. We also worked really closely and continue to work closely with the King County Historical Preservation folks, landmarking folks, and learned a lot about what restoration of a building is going to look like. At that time, we laid out a recommendation to take that Confluence Park project and really recognize it as two phases that need to be done for that. At the same time there, in 2023, the six-year CIP was being created. At that time, when you adopted the six-year CIP, we identified a whole new project, PK11, the Eck House project. Also in 2023, leveraging those $4 million of ARPA funding, a $700,000 grant from the state was awarded to us through the Department of Commerce. Those funds are also part of tonight's request for construction, construction work. In September of that year, Robin Spear joined us as Park Planning and Development Manager. These last two bullets really pertain a lot to Robin and segue really well. Robin brought her expertise and skill to really provide direct project management that really helped design of this project be finalized, and then some really, really important work, and often unseen work of going through a permitting process for a project this complex. So we're able to complete the permitting process earlier this summer. Once those permits were received, we put this project out to bid. Given the complexity of the project, we kept that bid open for five weeks. We then opened bids on September 27th. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Robin to take away the rest. Thank you.
Thanks, Jess. And good evening, Mayor and council members. It's an exciting point to be here in front of you tonight. It definitely takes a heavy lift to get to this point where we're about to hopefully award a project, but I want to really give a shout out to our entire Park Planning Development team, our planners in CPD and other departments who definitely reviewed the plan several times, Park Board and their feedback, obviously our community members. We have an artist involved, the tribes are also involved, and of course, our consultant Mathune, who put an exceptional amount of effort into the design. So it definitely, as they say, it takes a village to create a design this great. So our first rendering I wanted to show you was Veterans Memorial Plaza in particular, Ped Park. And this concept was actually really informed by community input, also by Issaquah's Historical Museum, DIA, downtown shop owners, the Arts Commission, and just several community members giving us feedback about what they thought would be important about the theme and what we wanted to pull out from the design. One of the fun parts about designing parks like this and urban plazas is digging into the theme that you're going to base your design off of. So what the community gave us, as far as feedback goes, was they really wanted to emphasize our creekside moments that we have downtown and our valley floor. So that's what we tried to draw into both of the designs. And Ped Park in particular...
I have a question on this slide.
Sure.
Could you give us a little perspective of what we're looking at? Am I standing in that, the gap between the two buildings that's diagonal, and I'm looking toward the old library and the senior center? Is that correct?
Correct. So you'd be walking down Sunset, probably right past Mackey's, and then about to turn right into Ped Park.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're at the intersection or almost to the intersection of Sunset and Front Street.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. There are a lot of people that might be watching that might not be as familiar with the project as we are.
Right, right. And yeah, so this is, I really wanted to emphasize the creekside feeling, particularly in the water feature. We always see water and creeks running through town, and we kind of wanted to keep that reflection going in the design. Everybody appreciates the sound of water, likes the sound of water, likes the feel of water, likes to be near the water. So I think this is a really, the water feature is going to be certainly an iconic piece of artwork that's not only visible during the summer when the water's on, but also during the winter months when you'll see a more sculptural feel to it. So we can appreciate that feature whether it's on or off. There'll be different types of seating, so you can choose how socially you want to be, if you want to have a moment to yourself or a moment with friends. There's lots of options for seating there. It promotes, it also promotes kind of the creekside feel with a shadier riparian feel. We are going to have more trees planted in there. We're going to have more shrubs, more plant materials, so it's going to reflect that creekside riparian feeling. That'll also give us a distinct change of seasons with the deciduous trees, particularly in the fall, and then spring flowering bulbs. Ped Park will definitely create a destination for socialization and relaxation downtown. We think it'll be a real important iconic piece for the downtown area. Next slide. Okay, the next slide is our senior center plaza, where, as Jeff said, we really, Jeff said, we really want to integrate that indoor/outdoor feel and make sure the senior center is integrated into not only the depot area, but becomes part of the memorial field as well. This plaza will really promote socialization for the seniors and more interaction with the neighbors. And with the playground right next door, we hope that the kids and the seniors will interact more and more families will be able to gather out there. One of the best parts that we did was we went out to lunch with the seniors, brought in some of the furnishings and the furniture, and let them actually choose what chairs they wanted at the plaza outside. So we know that it'll be comfortable and accessible for them. The outdoor area also encourages outdoor recreation in the new turf area. The seniors can do yoga, tai chi, lawn bowling, bocce or croquet. We really want to make sure that they get outside and they're able to enjoy the outdoor environment more, and again, encourage more social interaction and more exercise. Oh, sure, sure. So this would be more towards the playground, looking towards the south entrance of the senior center. And you can see the pavilion there where we have those, the new furnishings. I believe there's another ping pong table, ping pong table out there. And then just to the east side will be our turf area. So this will create some flexible space that can be used by the community, not only by the seniors, but by the entire community, to enjoy different types of outdoor events. And just thinking about salmon days and next year, what that's going to feel like during salmon days, I think will be pretty special and well-used. Okay, next slide. So the bid was open for five weeks. We did open the bids on September 27th. We had a great turnout. We had six contractors that submitted bid proposals. Our apparent low bidder and responsible bidder was Bay Shore Construction Company out of Arlington, Washington. And with, let's see, sorry, trying to read this. Our construction budget with the budget amendments, we had a total project budget total of $4,699,370. And with the construction breakdown, we had a project cost total of $4,697,329.49. So when we go to award the base bid, or when we look at base bids, we look at the base bid plus any bid alts. But we had four bid alts, one for Confluence Park Plaza, one for the raised pedestrian crosswalk, one for the decorative screen, and one for accent lighting. So Bay Shore's total bid was $5,318,279.95. Okay, next slide. So our staff recommendation, our department recommendation is to award the base bid for Veterans Memorial Plazas and allocate all of the ARPA funding to cover construction. We did have three options. The first option to allocate additional funding that's not currently budgeted to the project to provide a higher contingency and include bid alternates A through D to construct Confluence Park and supplemental elements to the design. Additional funding for the entire bid would probably be approximately $700,000. And I do want to say that right now we have a contingency of 3.6%. Usually we like to keep it around 8% to 10%, but because the bids did come in higher, we pulled down our contingency this time. Second option would be to postpone the bid award to provide time to identify funding. Third option would be do not award the contract and reject all bids and rebid the project at a future date.
Jeff, help finish this up.
Oh, that's great, Robin. Thank you. So yes, as stated, our recommendation before you, here's the motion. Due to, again, the uncertainty of construction costs, you don't really know what it's going to be till you open bids, it's pretty clear that the ARPA funding cannot go all the way to be able to fully fund the investments desired around pedestrian park and senior center as well as Confluence Park. So at this time, we recommend allocating all of that ARPA funding, complete the pedestrian park senior center projects that are leveraged with that state grant money, and then also recognize that would give the opportunity, as we get funding, to design the restoration of the Eck House, to complete that plaza behind the Eck House at the same time we do the full restoration of the Eck. So that is our recommendation before you to award the base bid this time.
Thank you. Questions? Deputy Council President?
Oh, just a quick question. Jeff, where are we on the Dog Park? Is that a part of, is that, there were some ARPA funds going to the Dog Park, right?
There were no ARPA funds for the Dog Park. So that still has city funding with the completion of Hillside Park underway right now with getting this project started. Dog Park is the next project that we want to get finished permitting and constructed.
Questions? Councilmember Joe?
If you could remind me, I heard, or maybe I remember, that there was a time limit that we had to spend the ARPA funds. One of the options is to postpone, but I'm wondering if we'd run up against that option, you know, against that time limit if we did? And if you could just remind us what that time limit is for those funds?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember. It's why it's not our recommendation. You're right, ARPA funding needs to be committed, allocated by the end of this year. So in that sense, we would want to be under contract with a contractor by the end of this year. And then we have, city has until, I believe, 2026 to spend the funds, but they have to be committed again by the end of this year.
Good question. We don't want to give it back. Any other questions? Hey, is somebody prepared to make a motion? Council President?
Thank you. Okay. I move to award the base bid construction contract excluding bid alternates A through D for the Veterans Memorial Plazas projects in the amount of $4,482,329.49, including sales tax, to Bay Shore Construction Company, and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the related agreement, and authorize the shift of $800,000 of ARPA funds from Project PK010, Confluence Park Plaza, to Project PK041, Veterans Memorial Plaza Projects, for a total PK041 project budget of $4,697,329.49.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Pretty enthusiastic second. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Council President, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I just want to recognize, you know, we are in difficult budget times, and it is very important that we are able to achieve completion of projects that came through ARPA funding. And I recognize, you know, not everything goes the way that we would necessarily like it to. We aren't able to fund the same things in $2025 as we were in $2022. And so recognizing that, I appreciate the administration making adjustments rather than trying to achieve all that we initially wanted to accomplish, going through additional funds from the general fund and such. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So before this meeting, I went back and reviewed our October meeting from 2022 where we discussed this, and at that meeting, we did discuss the Dog Park as well. That had been reviewed by our Community Volunteer Commission as one potential project. And we discussed that that wouldn't be, that using funding from a different source other than ARPA wouldn't slow down that timeline. And I think that, you know, when I was thinking about this allocation of funding from the Confluence Park project to complete the base construction bid on the Veterans Memorial and Senior Center plazas, I still feel the same way that I felt in 2022, that this confluence piece is really important, it's really an important part of our park system. I was just there by the Eck House this weekend, as was, you know, probably thousands of community members. And the Eck House is a city-owned historic building that, at 1890 farmhouse, that the city owns, and there was a fire in 2018, and you can still see on the outside visible plaque, fire damage, and it's boarded up. And it's right next to, very adjacent to a really awesome playground. So in 2018, I had a one-year-old son, we love that playground. It's very innovative and sort of a natural kind of modern play... It's very innovative and sort of a natural kind of modern playground. And then right next to it for that entire time, he's now seven years old, for the entire childhood, it has been boarded up. And for a while, it had, it had that construction tape to keep out. And it's, you know, we talked about wanting to make the pedestrian plaza more welcoming and, and, you know, I, I just see this real need to, to take action on this public-owned building that is serving no public use. It's not providing any public benefit, and it has been that way for years. So I, I know that the funding here was to provide a, to do a plaza in that same area to bring in some historic elements. And I just, I still see this, this real need to address Confluence Park, and specifically this corner of Confluence Park, to, and I was an advocate for including that in the ARPA funding when we considered it in 2022. I still think it's very, it's very important. I also think there's huge potential there for tying in the farmlands with that community garden that's right in that park. I think a lot of the same reasons why the Senior Center project was, was able to get additional funding, because it's providing accessibility from the Senior Center to the playground. For example, ADA accessibility, I think that we have some of those same sorts of challenges that we could address if we take another look at this corner of Confluence Park. And it's, it's a very direct analogy, but I, the way I see it, if you have a house and there's one part that's, you know, damaged, or there's a hole in the roof, you fix that first and then, and then look at the other parts of the house for, you know, beautification. I do think that the projects here will provide a huge community benefit. I think that there's great work that's gone into the artistic renderings and a lot of community input. At the same time, I don't support kicking this can further down the road, especially since it has been visibly, at a very, very visible corner of one of our really beloved parks. It has been a visibly burned building since 2018.
Any other comments? Not seeing any indication. The motion on the table is moved and seconded to award the base bid construction contract excluding bid alternatives A through D for the Veterans Memorial Plazas projects in the amount of $4,482,329.49, including sales tax, to Bay Shore Construction Company, and to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the related agreement, and to authorize the shift of $800,000 of ARPA funds from Project PK010, Confluence Park Plaza, to Project PK041, Veterans Memorial Plaza Projects, and for a total PK041 project budget of $4,697,329.49. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That carries four to one. And that, just wanted to add one other comment for our director, and that is that we are, we do have two councilmembers absent this evening that participated in those earlier discussions. And I think it would be great to send them an email explaining the decision that was made this evening so that there is no, that they're not, that they are aware of this change, because it's a big change and they were part of the original discussion. That would be great. So we're moving on to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The October 2nd Public Affairs Committee for Cascade Water Alliance was canceled. The next board meeting for Cascade Water Alliance is October 23rd. LTAC held a special meeting on September 26th, and just to convey to the council that discussions are continuing to talk about finding an event that could be placed on the shoulder seasons to help bring more tourists and more economic vitality to the city. So the shoulder season would be not the high summer season, but either end of those where hotels have more vacancies and there's less tourist traffic through town. So that discussion will continue, and I'll update you as it, as it comes around. The next meeting for the LTAC committee is November 20th. The agenda has not been set yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met on October 1st. We had one item on the agenda, which was COM 0017, Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. We did ask for more policy guidance on one particular policy in the, in the comprehensive plan, which was around zero to 30% AMI, addressing zero to 30% AMI housing needs. This was at the, at the request of an agency that had reviewed our comp plan, and we recommended getting more options for policies that would help us as policymakers achieve that. And then we also discussed that we will draft a letter from the committee to the council with our full recommendation, also explaining the process. The comp plan went through an extensive review process with our awesome boards and commissions and volunteers, as well as incorporating feedback from the community and other agencies. And so we will be providing that letter, as well as a review of recommendations for future work that was not included into this comprehensive plan update. And that would include things, for example, such as how we would implement HB 1110, which is the recent state's policy around missing middle housing. And so since we have more work to do on that, we will provide some updates, which hopefully will help future councils when they review this comp plan periodic update about what was done and what is left to be done. I have one future meeting. There will be a ceremonial kokani fry release at Siamash State Park on October 17th at 4:00 PM. The event starts at 4:00 PM. And this is a great event. There will be the Snoqualmie Tribe Trout Unlimited, as well as elected officials, and it will be a celebration of the work of the kokani work group to preserve our kokani, which are, are very special salmon that live their whole lifecycle in Lake Siamash. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee is meeting tomorrow, October 8th at 6:30 here in chambers. We have a single agenda item. It is COM 0034, Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Polly. I have no reports, but I have a number of meetings coming up. Thursday, October 10th is Eastside Human Services Forum. Friday, October 11th will be Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting. And I think I had announced that the October Regional Transit Committee meeting was canceled. It is not canceled anymore, and so it'll be held on the afternoon of October 16th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. Let's see. October 3rd, the King County Affordable Housing Committee met. We continue to go through the housing elements for everyone's comprehensive plans. This month, it was Bozarts Village, Hunts Point, North Bend, Sea-Tac, and Tukwila. And as you can see from that list, very much a variation in what you're going to see in the housing elements from each of those cities. But we did approve comment letters to each of them. We also had an interesting point. You know how at the beginning of the year, we all agreed to housing allocations and all of that through discussions with the county? Well, now we've got two cities coming back, Carnation and Snoqualmie, saying, hey, something's changed. We can't really accommodate this growth. Those two cities are asking for basically having their housing growth target. Carnation wants to go from 799 to 350, and Snoqualmie wants to go from 1,500 to 719. These are not large numbers. They fit within the Department of Commerce allocation that we needed to achieve countywide. So we're kind of covered on that. But GMPC, the Growth Management Planning Commission, I always forget, yeah, is taking this up and will ultimately be the one deciding on it. Obviously, some concerns about, hey, does somebody, is somebody able to come back later and ask for an adjustment? What's our policy and process for doing it? So we gave feedback on that, just basically saying, hey, we, we would like to see those numbers allocated elsewhere rather than just disappeared from our allocated need for King County. But the good news is if they do adjust those growth targets, they're going to eliminate the 80% and above amount. And so those cities would still be allocated their adjusted median income housing numbers for 80% and below. So they would be required to accommodate within their zoning and plan something that would be able to build that type of housing. And usually that requires some density. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Next item is the mayor's report, so there will not be an executive session this evening. I did want to make some comments about what an amazing salmon days weekend that we had. It was very fun to see so many people come to Issaquah and celebrate the return of the salmon. Many, many, many thanks to everyone involved in planning and orchestrating another successful event, including the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce, our City of Issaquah staff, and the incredible numerous organizations and volunteers that make this possible. Today, I attended the annual King County Executive Small Business Awards Ceremony, and our staff nominated nine Issaquah businesses. Two of them were recognized today. Morgan Cosmetics won the Exporting Small Business of the Year. And Infinity Farms down on Issaquah Hobart Road was a finalist for the Rural Small Business of the Year. We are honored that these and other entrepreneurs have chosen Issaquah to invest and grow their businesses. I invite other entrepreneurs and business owners to contact our Economic Development staff at ed@issaquahwa.gov to learn how we can support your business and making them successful in our community. The Issaquah Police Department's pink patches are now available for purchase. The promotional patches are part of the Pink Patch Project, Pink Patch Project, say that three times fast, whose mission is to raise awareness about the life-saving benefits of early detection and intervention against breast cancer. By wearing the pink patch, the police department joins officers from 300 cities across the nation, showing support and raising money for breast cancer awareness and research. All profits will be donated to Footprints of Fight, a local charity involving, involved in supporting families with children that have been diagnosed with cancer. You can purchase a patch for $10 or by making a donation directly to Footprints of Fight. There will be the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust bringing their annual tree planting celebration to Issaquah this Saturday, October 12th, at the Lake Siamash State Park, with the goal of planting 800 trees as part of the Lower Issaquah Creek Stream and Riparian Habitat Enhancement Project. This event will showcase the in-stream restoration work for salmon recovery and the completion of the City of Issaquah's Large Woody Material Project at Lake Siamash. You can register to volunteer at this event or find more information on the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust website. That concludes the mayor's report. Let's move on to good of the order. Any items before I go into council meetings? Council President?
Thank you. I want to echo what you said about salmon days. It was fantastic. Love that however we got that great weather and all that enabled everyone coming down and seeing everything in the city. I had two other notes. Councilmember Hall is not here, so I wanted to just highlight the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board is going to have what may be the culmination of the budget conversation on Thursday. And so I'm still studying up on it, but if anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact me. I will see what we can do. Not sure if it's going to end up advancing or getting pushed back for more conversation, but there's definitely some big numbers there. And then on a totally different note, y'all may remember, one of my favorite times of the year is the pumpkin derby, which is coming up. For those who don't recognize, the city has a staff event for racing pumpkins down a derby track, because why not? And so the city council for the fourth year in a row now, I think, will have a derby car. So if anybody would like to contribute to that, either in engineering or artistry, please do contact me. I have our cart from last year. We will make it down the derby track. We will.
Council President, is there anything on regional assignments and appointments that you need to remind people on? Are we doing pretty good there?
Well, if there is anybody for Sound Cities Association that wants to apply, we have heard from three council members about potential applications. Those are due October 17th, and we would like to obviously get those coordinated ahead of time. So if there is anything that you would like to apply or reapply for...
Or drop off of.
Ooh.
Because I need to do is drop it off.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Please do let us know.
Thank you very much. I think it was, Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I, I would just like to give some compliments to our Sister Cities Commission. They were in the parade. They were a very lively group throughout the whole route. They also gave personal time to volunteer at the tent right outside City Hall, where they were showcasing our artist that was visiting us. And they gave it their time and were very enthusiastic, and I really appreciate all the efforts that they make to make the Sister City relationship work. And I know that if you could pass that on to the staff that were there, it was just, just a very nice touch to salmon days. Thank you.
It was fun. Thank you for that. Any other good of the order items? If not, I'll go through meetings. So the council has several upcoming meetings, a committee of the whole next Monday, October 14th at 6:30 PM. The anticipated agenda items include the 25, 26 legislative agenda and an affordable housing update. The next regular city council meeting is Monday, October 21st, and anticipated agenda items include the school zone speed camera. And last call for good of the order, I'm going to move to the next item, the executive session. We will not be having one this evening. And if there's no additional business, we are adjourned at 9:27. Thank you.